Vice President Lizer here on November 24th, Tuesday, our usual time, 10:00 AM. COVID-19 Town Hall update this morning. Welcome. Thank you for joining us this morning, all you across Facebook Live land. Today is another day where we'll be giving timely updates. We did change the format around a little bit different, so we hope you like it and we think it's going to be as great as they always are. So without further ado, let us open up in prayers we always do and then I'll introduce our guests here. Yeah, Sidi and God, we thank you, Lord, that you gave us another day of life. You put the breath of life in our lungs, Lord, and we pray, Father, that many would receive that. Even now, Lord, as sensitive as this respiratory illness is, Lord, that you, Father, see fit to bestow your blessing across the land. Lord, we pray for those that are enduring hardship at the present time, Lord, those that are sick, bring healing, Lord, those that are mourning, bring strength and comfort. Lord, we thank you. We pray mercy upon this land, mercy upon your people, Father, all across the land. And this day, Father, we thank you that we can come to you. We can pray for wisdom. We pray and we thank you, Lord, for all of our first responders, our doctors and our nurses and our technicians and all those administratively needed, all crucial, Lord, in this fight against COVID-19. We thank you for them, Lord. Lord, we ask that you be with us, Father. Yeah, give us your knowledge and your wisdom, Father, which is the principal thing. We thank you that many are trained and can provide answers and guidance at this time. And Father, because your word says there is safety in the counsel of many, Father God, President and I, we thank you that we have access to us, Lord, Father, those that have trained eyes and ears, Lord, and the knowledge in which to guide and steer the nation during this time of COVID. And Lord, you knew that we'd be facing this, Father. So Lord, as our faith is tested, Lord, I pray that many arise, shine, Lord, and that their faith extend out to yours, Father. And Lord, touch the people all across the land, Lord. We thank you again. We ask you to be with us in this time, Lord. Let all the knowledge and the wisdom, Lord, go out and bless the people and let them act on it by faith, Lord, and they be blessed by it. We thank you again. We ask you to be with our president and all those that are out delivering food boxes, Lord, bless them, and they're coming in and they're going. We pray for traveling mercies for them all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Again, Vice President Lizer here. Thank you for joining us. It's good to be with you all again this morning. And like I said, we did change up the format a little bit. And so without further ado, we're going to get started right from the get-go here. We have our own Dr. Va, our medical epidemiologist and co-lead along with Del Yazi from our Navajo Department of Health and our Indian Health Service, and they're doing a great job out there. So we thank them for all that they do. And so, but she's with us this morning to give us some crucial COVID-19 information and updates. And again, we changed it up a bit. And also joining her will be our own Dr. Perfilia Fowler to interpret in the episode and to give the interpretation. So I hope you like it and we appreciate you joining us this morning. So, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Va, our medical epidemiologist, to give you the information, crucial information, and also Dr. Fowler to interpret the episode. So ladies, take it away.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much, Vice President Lizer and President Metz. And I do have the pleasure of presenting this morning with Dr. Fowler. And how we will do this is that we will present every two slides and Dr. Fowler will help me provide this in Navajo so that we can address any questions that the entire audience may have. So thank you very much. I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen. And so this has been presented on a weekly basis, and this is how our Unified Epi and Data Translation Team works together and try to provide data that is, that we can use for action, for public health strategies to help us, to help us slow down the spread and help control this outbreak of COVID-19 here in Navajo Nation. And so we are a huge team. We work with the Public Health Response. We work with our executive office. And of course, I also have my partner, Del Yazi, and the entire team to thank for this data that we provide on a weekly basis and daily basis as well. And the first slide I would like to show, if you are not familiar with this yet, is that we use four basic data points that speak to cases and trends in cases. Testing, do we have enough tests available for everyone to get tested across the Navajo Nation? And then our ability to respond. Hospital capacity, do we have enough hospital beds and staff to treat our sickest patients? And our public health capacity, do we have enough people and staff available for effective contact tracing? And we look at all four of these indicators to really understand where is our risk? How far, how far has spread occurred? And then what should we do from a public health response perspective to try to slow or control the spread of COVID-19? And then what can people do just as a community member such as myself and everyone else? What can we do to protect our families and ourselves and those that we care about? And that provides us an insight on which phases we may be in for all of Navajo Nation. And I'll stop there and allow Dr. Fowler to help interpret. So the first curve I'm showing here is what we call our Epi curve. It's been smoothed out. And what I mean by that is that it tries to speak to the number of cases that we have every day and then take out all the noise so that we can understand the trend underlying this. And what we do see this, this is all for all of Navajo Nation from the beginning of our outbreaks. It's March, early March, the first few weeks of March. And what we understand is that this first curve that you see is when we hit our first wave, where we peaked at around maybe on average about 115 cases per day. And then due to public health orders, executive orders, the participation from the community members across Navajo Nation, we were able to bring that wave down and really bring it all the way down to right up into Labor Day. But since Labor Day, what we have seen is that we have seen an increase in cases where we clearly entered into our second wave. And at the end of last week, we were averaging, by the end of Thursday last week, we were averaging 155 cases per day. So what we take from this is that we have already surpassed our first wave, the peak of our first wave. We are likely to, we are likely to continue increasing. And the reason I say that is because I do understand that over the weekend, on Friday and on Sunday, we reported more than 350, 380 cases over two 24-hour periods. And so our peak is likely higher than this as well as of today. Now, this is how we compare it to the United States. What we understand is that across the United States, again, the first few cases of COVID-19, first recognized, and surged in a few areas, in New York City area, New York, in Washington, in California. And that's what you see here with their first wave. So their first wave was very medium. And then soon after Memorial Day, you saw the U.S. in blue go into a second wave following Memorial Day. And then since then, you see the U.S. just quickly just rises straight up into this third wave. So for the Navajo Nation, we saw one wave following, you know, starting in March and then has continuously gone down. We did not see a wave trigger following Memorial Day. And likely that's because of the cooperation of everybody in the community. But since then, we have entered into our second wave and it's going into what we call exponential growth. What that means is that now the growth, you know, the outbreak and the cases are coming and they're increasing, but they're increasing faster and faster every week. So each week is faster than the next. And that's what we are all experiencing. Dr. Fowler?
Thank you, Dr. Va. [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] Dr. Va?
What we have here is the graph of Navajo Nation compared to the entire United States. And so the other 50 states and jurisdictions. Navajo Nation is in yellow. The four states that surround us, Utah, Colorado, Mexico, Arizona, are in red. And then the other states and jurisdictions are in gray. Where, what it tries to capture is that it captures the number of cases and the rising cases over the last seven days ending last Thursday. So this is a seven-day window. And where we rank currently is that the Navajo Nation ranks eighth, but we are ranked across the 50 states and jurisdictions in the four-corner region. And what that means is that for our population, so per capita for our population, our cases are rising and rising faster than Utah, Colorado, New Mexico, and Arizona. And then what we have here is we have, again, in a seven-day window ending last Thursday, we have the number of cases for every 100,000 population for the eight big service areas and tribal health organizations combined. When we presented this data last week, everyone was red. And what we had to do, because of the impact of number of cases in that seven-day window was so high, we actually had to add two extra categories. And what that means is that places like the state of Utah, Tuba City, Chinlea, Gallup, and Crown Point, they had more than 100 to 200, 100 to 199 cases for every 100,000 people over in a seven-day window. And then Winslow had more than 200 cases for every 100,000 people in a seven-day window. And so that purple and bruised purple indicates the level of impact, and this is just a seven-day window. Dr. Fowler? Now, what we have here speaks to our testing capacity and our availability across Navajo Nation. And what we do know is that Navajo Nation has increased their, the testing available to everyone across the nation. And so we have increased the volume of tests done. Despite that, we are seeing our test positivity at 18%. And so what that means is that one in five tests or one in six tests are coming back positive. And I'm going to stop there and let Dr. Fowler explain. And George, you know, one of our other indicators is hospital capacity. And the reason why we look at hospital capacities is this, is that it's really important as we see this massive wave of cases coming, is that we do understand a small percentage of our people of those cases will require hospitalization and they require higher, higher levels of care. And so it's really important that we understand, are those resources available? And when I speak about resources, I mean hospital beds, staffing such as doctors, nurses, respiratory therapists, and, you know, and if those resources are not available here, are they going to be available elsewhere such as in Arizona, New Mexico, Utah, and Colorado? And so in looking at that, we do track very closely our hospital capacity and how many beds are taken up. And so for example, the first graph on your left, and this is just over the three-day period, November 17th, the 18th, and 19th, is that we were looking at the percent of beds utilized here in Navajo Nation across all facilities, tribal health organizations, and IHS facilities. And what we do know is that over that three-day period, by November 19, we reached 80% full. And what that means is that our ICU beds were 80% full in combination. When it reaches 80%, it starts to really stress the system. And what I mean by that is that if anybody requires any level of care or needs a higher level of care such as ICU care, so that could be for strokes, for heart attacks, for accidents, it's, you know, they may, there's going to be difficulty in finding the staffed beds or resources to treat them appropriately. And so this starts to impact other levels of care for other reasons outside of COVID-19. And then the graph here that you see next to it is percent of COVID beds utilized among 638 facilities. And what we do know that that has already reached capacity and gone beyond 80%. And what we are hearing and that we know as well is that Utah and the surrounding states, New Mexico, Colorado, and Arizona are seeing the same trends, which may impair our ability to transfer our sickest people out for any purpose. Dr. Fowler?
[speaking Navajo] Idan ay di tsaskeh nlini ye go da 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 deske. Ako do do la izel igo do la tsaskeh nasnelda. Ako di allah abeso be waltcha oh. Se bi dotlaj belaho el kichik edo shidane. Ako di izel inel allah edda topel nahaz allah six thirty-eight deilne la ay IHS deilne. Ako ad ende elhinay tsago di dinnabechahotzogo kaio tsaskehi chad tabi oh. Jo akho eselke. Ado na na di kujet um, nsh, um, nshchadigi eh ya yahanne ay di d'kwas ntsai betta dolnai. Adje tsaskeh do ah. La bananas del eh ay di allah abeso be waltcha i tse tse bi tse bi do tshilbelaho el kichik edo shidane. Ako ah isi do nachaya edda do nasgo eh ya chaxin tsago ben chichin nahoti. Ah ah ni koe edd'kwas ntsai beto olna oh. Naho bellit olnilhi. Ad oh jo konle hos dojita adonle kujebeldi ta sunnelijita. Adje ay dachata eh bi go. Chago sh eh nichet dinnabe bellit da olnil. Eh na kodo banan hinik chaxik edo shidane. Ado adinalne shi tsaskehya chalani izel inel izel nekaha. Eshtehalini nahashohida. Ni ke ala eshteyoli adje do tabi oh. Ako chadla jo de ben chilkhotonneh no kodo tsaskeh nasango. Ah ba ba do do ba eshtet edda do ba ohseli. Databaa?
And lastly, what we do look at is we look at contact tracers. Um, and our ability to do contact tracing. The Navajo Nation increased their contact tracers to two hundred and seventy-seven across the nation. Um, however, we still don't have enough. Um, it's ideal to really slow this down and control it. You want five contact tracers as your target for every new case, and right now we only have two. Now, contact tracing is really important to want to to can to do. It's one of our essential tools, among other things, where it helps us slow the spread, you know, flatten the curve, protect those hospital resources, and then also protect protect people and families. And so contact tracing is a critical part of our our of our response. And this is something we are working on improving.
Yana nete di koe egie ya contact tracing yinne. Chaxin tsago tselke di ke shtwisani adje izel ijij deilne shi belaganae jo contact tracing deilne eh eh naalchahii ol ye. Akon na kide nezat dino an tso 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 dino an tso tso. Akonlaa eh adje deilne. Akon de ah na khe go eh chaxin tsago di bedolnai neilcha. Oh 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 kodo olna oh eh eshtla bi eshtla deilne jo adje naalchahii jo eh di bedolnai chadi ya go ad enalchahela iyil ichi nahasne. Adje la da iyil ichi nahasnaa eshtla ah da dachijinjo da iyil ichis ilkheh nahasne ah. Ay di yishnahasne eh ado adje do naalchahiholno. Ado chaxin tsago oyo nanil endo ney dagoe. Ako di naalchahii eh do do betchenei no ad ay cha chahani. Ey shi konle la deilne shi eh. Ba akonosen adje ay critical yinni ye go. La do ah bena anishe ot ako ashkon debikahonosan di di. Databaa?
And and lastly, I wanna put this in context of what is happening now. I know we're going into, we are going into Thanksgiving this week. Um, Christmas and the holidays are next month. Um, and so a lot of us, you know, are experiencing COVID fatigue. A lot of families are experiencing COVID fatigue. But when we start to think about travel and gathering and friends and family visiting, are us going to visit them? I think it's really to important to understand the risk that's happening out there across the United States. The next few maps I'm about to show shows you how quickly a one week period can change the picture, right? And so this is by counties across the United States. Notice how many counties shift from minimal to moderate to high risk. This is over a one week period. And so you see here, even in Arizona, Utah, Colorado, New Mexico, a lot of these counties, very few are are lower than high risk. And so what that means is that the risk of COVID nineteen is high across the United States. For those that plan on traveling, for your family that may be considering to visit you, or for you, i- it's more considering visiting others, is that it's, there is so much community spread in the communities across the United States that it's very risky to do so. Um, and this map sort of gives another concept of that, right? If you look at the states, all of the states except for three states have uncontrolled spread. And that means COVID nineteen risk in the communities is extremely high, and this is why the urgency. Dr. Fowler?
Thank you, Dr. Ba. I appreciate that. Na, kehe chik edo shidane kodo um yana sna egie chaxin tsago eslatiin chahotzogo ah ah ni ye go da daske do ako ed ed eda chik edo shidane. Chaxin tsago ni kaido ni kain nlini ot la tabergan. Ako ashkon de di chanaa da hi iltsan ne winosen. Oh oyu go naa jodoh do 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 neeneta. Oh n- uh, nichitzaa de deske do de ilwell. Jo akot ah eh obel ochos desze oh shi eh ad eh hawanesota. Ako ah akoi jinle tso tsajinijin. Laho anil. Do ye go anil chik edo shidane. Ako di da antsangol chahistoi ad enilcha do ye nichet dahalne. Ako kodo nichet yahilni idoba ayeh di zenda. Akon de ah nichinit ad eh ya di litsojodatadi kha. Do tesh jo jo go eh ya ni zendi green walyeni. Ako chaxin tsago ay di ye go dotlaj. Jo eh ah isi litschki da da bellot. Jo akho ilkel eh na bahat tsajik edo shidane. Hajo aljashidi chajitargat. Jo akojijin de ah hawa desota eh nachayat eh nichijinne. Databaa?
And so, you know, so where we are right now is that Navajo Nation needs a day zero for multiple reasons. Our cases go up and they are going up fast, every week faster than the next. Um, you know, our testing capacity, we have increased testing, but yet still one in five to one in six tests are coming back positive. Our hospital capacity here in Navajo Nation and across our four states are being stressed. Um, and then we are, you know, we are not having enough contact tracers to clearly control this. And so now we're just aiming to even slow it down. And so there is extensive community spread across the uh Navajo Nation at this time. Uh, and so we are recommending for the community to shelter in place. And then for those that are in direct first responders, healthcare facilities, we are all hands on deck, ready to respond. Dr. Fowler?
Kodo ah isi yahannei ah honanat eh chik edo shidane. Di nichet atoznai. Eh di tsa, di tsa da hischani beno alchai ati ah den. Eh na ati oyo ya ilkel jo di do do de honeta faces deilnani egie belaganae jo. Allah abi khe go eh chaxin tsago. Allah do be betchenei cha ini no eh di ni nte. Ado di naalchahin lenigi. Adjo oyu naalchahin de do ba eshtet ni teda. Izel ijij naa raj tsaskehani debahwixne ay adje nde naahoti. Nanakujin dadne shindeh izel ney kain de nichitzaa ya edza do do oyu nachandadne shi de eh do kodo be kajjo ba ini zen. Ako elad yenli eh ya di koe shelter in place deilnani eltsa. Choey ah hawa desota eltsa ah ltskona i shi endalini be ye chana chani eltsa. Nahotle don hisne eh ol ye shelter in place eltsa ah hawa desenta. Databaa?
Great, and so now the last few slides are to to really provide you with some tools so that you understand and all of us understand our role in this response. Because what we do in this next week is really critical on what we will see in the following weeks into the holiday season and into twenty twenty-one. And what I wanna point out is that, yes, the burden here has been enormous here in Navajo Nation. But, you know, less than ten out of a hundred people have ever been diagnosed with COVID nineteen here in the Navajo Nation. So what does that mean? It means that ninety percent of the folks here are still very susceptible. And there's still a role to try to limit and prevent transmission to those ninety percent of the people. Because we do know that a vaccine is just around the corner. Um, and if we can help prevent further spread or slow spread, then we can really help protect as many people as we can and just help bridge bridge people so that, you know, to the point where the vaccine is available and distributed to as many people as possible. And that's what we're hoping to do right now. Dr. Fowler?
Chaxin tsago kodo chik edo shidane. Nichet chahotzogo dinnabechahotzogo chado ay chaxin tsago di nas etin. Allah abeso be wajini. Nas etin do tesh jo akonlaa eh chaxin tsago dinnahi betadilna ako chaleit ah ilhla do ya endo olnil. Nini chaxin tsago koderilna ho. Ay di kijin la do ah hawa desestao el eh aljashin negativot on ni nte. Jo ah hawa desestago do do hawa desestago eh di chaxine la bena eschna. Jo eh betzha achatini eh bet beto bedetodnahe bena jo akot ah eh ben deilnishdo chaleit ah eh desne it eh. Databaa?
So this is what we know, and this is how what we can do. We know that people with no symptoms can still spread COVID nineteen. And what that means is that if we adopt universal precautions for COVID nineteen such as wearing a mask, social distancing, washing our hands, then we know that we can protect each other. And what I mean by that is that people with no symptoms, including myself, you know, may spread it to others unknowingly. But if we all do this, then it will reduce the chances that we may unknowingly spread it to others that we care about. Um, we also know that COVID nineteen is spread through the air, especially inside your home. Because within the household, you have likely overcrowding to some degree. Means that you have multiple family members with prolonged contact because you live with them. And then likely most homes, there's a lot of homes that have poor ventilation. And when those conditions exist, then there is airborne transmission, which means that COVID nineteen, you can spread it through these tiny, tiny droplets that you cannot see with the eye. And it can go further and linger potentially minutes to hours in the air. And then third, we also know that contact tracing remains critical because it will help us slow the spread so that we can respond to those that really need it. Uh, and then we can bridge people, like I said, to when a vaccine is readily available. And that's just right around the corner. And isolation and quarantine can protect your family. Dr. Fowler?
Na, kehe. Kodo yahannei di dinnani tlini. Tselke di ke shtwisani ni tlini. Axin ni do di kwas da do do nichet chahoneeske dan de. Bellnei da shid eh chik edo shidane. Do la do shid ati nichet eh da banho ed eh. Di beni na eh chago shi ensenyado chashi eltsa. I ke de bell bellnehosinle na ni ya go da ed edo da ed eh. Eh beni na di koe be ben dey bahi eh chi do ni ta desbali chajo ben dakchay. Di koe eselchik betta desbali ados ze do. Ako nichena do nichijad nichitzi ado betta dolnehe. Ado di nichelchi ta desbali chajo ben dakchay. Di it ah eh do ta. Ado di do do ta. Ako chajo ben dakchay beni nahot ah ben dakchay dan chidini naa jod. Cha chi honne chaze onne da eh edjol eh eh ba ben dey bado bena ben dey chay. Ado nichila do ah chadchadakis. Ado um, chla tabedidne. Sanitizer tabedidne ni. Chajo cholten chajo be eh dolchla. Andle nichila ki jo ne betta um, be be chajo am be ta dolchla. Ako di hawanesota go jo adje ay isetehotza dan chilne. Di nichet um, nchich eh deilne. Nchich edo chaxin tsago di ye iltcheo. Nicherje ta deltasokoe ban yileho. Ah koe banho do yit oh oh ado dahadijof nzagoe edjof. La dachijinda ah koe do lei la ta la 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 ayeh ilke da. Ah ban do lel eh beni na. Onasi ah hawaneseta ben dakchay dan chidne. Oh ako chi yu go hawan. Ah ayeh ta shetolna ho ed eh jo di naa jolhi ah teshne. Naa jolgo nte ni tchol obde go datijol. Eh chaxin zagoe ah ah naa jol. Aljashin nle ado di ventilation deilne. Nle do um, uh, do da dadel chalajila do chajo naajchego. Aden naajchegi dahatati tchol da ed eh jo eh ayeh ne. Ado di contact tracing deilne ni eh ye go. Um, ba ba bene nshchala eh eh chaxin tsago naalchadono ya go nts- um, bellilchita hotne eh eh la do eh kaedolwell. Jo eh oh koe ah adeniniyala eh be chonodone eh tsasunta bedetonne. Jo eh koe. Ako ah hawa desota ro ah nichet da akof ya ah hawa de go eh eh nichet dinnane. Nichinaga ni kain nlini uh ya ed eh onahazchando le ako oh chajo tso tshaho wa de eh eh nichetaini ke chik edo shidane. Databaa?
All right, so this is what you can do. Now, the next two slides are talking about actions of what you can do. And so how do you prevent what we call living room spread, spread within your household, which is those that live with you? In order to do that, you need to know your risk. Um, how vulnerable is your household? Do you have members that are elderly and have health issues? And how safe is your bubble? And when I say bubble, again, those that you really interact with within that household. And so anyone who leaves the bubble increases your risk. Uh, we understand you can't stay in the bubble and everyone can't stay in the bubble. But this is how you reduce your risk to your bubble, to your household. Essential activities only, such as grocery shopping, getting gas, getting water, going to work. Um, and if you do these essential activities, allocate one person to perform those essential activities. No indoor visiting with other family members outside your household. Again, household, anybody who lives under your roof right now. No visitors inside your household. Wear a mask, socially distance, and if you have members of the family or any or yourself work off outside your household for a prolonged period of time, please quarantine and test before returning home. Dr. Fowler?
Koe eh ya chaxin tsago izel ide eh ya dozene kadozene indanleni. Koe eh ya be kaedilwell do ah nichet nichet nahazango eh bena antjen eh living room spread deilne chad shi hawa hawan chazangij jo koe eh ya sidah. Ako chano la do chano la yahanne. So da do ah kon dan chilcha. Chaxino la eh ya di um, chaxi be chenin da hasti heshtwi do sani ama ayeh anala etche da. Da chada dey taho da da tse be che da banha da hasti am be cha ashkash da tse nte tsehi da da tse be be chenin nahoti. Jo eh eh yichthazeno ya ed eh. La akot ah nichet nahazchha eh tskaa ashon de. Allah akoh chana da nichilne. Nicheti ne ano la oh ado oyu chana chahonle chago dan chilnudadelgo ano la oh. Ako di bubble yinni eh jo nichet eh ya di hawa nmasis jo adje keha shi nmasgo pe tzesda. Allah ad eh chajakta. Yahanjataho eh ado yahanjataha eh di eltsachala da chadigihakke da chajdi. Le naazden zwell da. Jo eh ayeh naa koe ye go be eh da da hotjelia. Beni na ney hashtwisanis tselke di ke nlini la da be chenin nahoti oh. Bellnehazi eschchago biyol da be be chenin nahoti oh da chadao da be chenin nahoti oh. Eh adje orgo ye go bahastki chik edo shidane. Ako di chaxin tsago eh ya di um, oh oh na [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] Dr. Vaughn?
And lastly, you know, not only are we seeing spread to spread to spread driving this among households, we are seeing it in the workforce. And so, common issues that we are seeing, leading to transmission is not wearing masks a hundred percent of the time, eating together in shared spaces, carpooling and ride sharing, overcrowding work sites. And so, ways to prevent workplace spread is to wear a mask a hundred percent of the time, even in cubicles. Don't eat in shared spaces, including cubicles. And then in regards to carpooling, the CDC has recommendations for that. Meaning, wear a mask, limit the number of people, ride to work with the same people. And then, of course, you know, disinfecting, hand hygiene, and ventilation is key. And then consider for those facilities that can do this, consider staggered work schedules to reduce crowding and promote teleworking if feasible. Dr. Fowler?
[speaking Navajo] 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 Dr. Vaughn?
And, you know, lastly, you know, the take home point here is that the next few weeks are really key and critical. Again, Thanksgiving is in a few days. The holiday season is upon us in December and going into 2021. Our goal is to get as many people um, over that bridge until a vaccine is available. We know that's coming soon. And so, we all have a role in this. And what we do in the next few weeks will really impact what we see in coming to holiday season and going into the new year. Thank you so much for all the work that everyone here has done. I want to thank everybody here that's listed. To the President's office, President Ness, Vice President Lizer, Dr. Fowler for her interpretation. Um, and to everyone out there who's listening. Thank you for taking your part in helping all of us get over this hump together. Thank you.
[speaking Navajo] 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 [speaking Navajo]
And we'll go ahead and give the time now to President, uh, Honorable President Jonathan Ness. So let's, I hear, Mr. President?
Oh, yeah, uh, Eli, can you hear us?
Sir, I can hear you.
All right, so you're at, and you're at the needle there. So, Red Valley, uh, Arizona, there it is. Uh, oh, who, John, they, they, nah, nah, uh, oh, Kodo, Dr. Vaughn, oh, Dr. Fowler, you just, I'm just gonna eat, da. Kodo, bondahui, nah. Nah, kid, John, da, and it's, so, nah, do, 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 John, da, and it's, so, nah,
Bede il niqdo olde, shi e koon iki e nihi dne.
Across our land. We'll be placing ourselves in a mode of Thanksgiving, right? When we see this pandemic, this virus, we can have it all across our people, our land here. You know, what is there to be thankful for? But it's an attitude, it's a posture, I believe. Once trained to take those things that are meant for evil and for bad to, God will use them for good in our lives. You know, all across land, I've heard stories of relationships mending. But we've also seen our enemy at work, the monster, right? As President Nez has alluded to, our families are succumbing. Our families are being challenged at a very difficult level. And the hardships are amplified and magnified during this time. So one and many are coming to your aid. One and many are praying, one and many are fasting, and they're doing whatever they can. I see a lot of people just thinking about the Navajo Nation, praying for the Navajo Nation, and acting, activating themselves and helping, you know, volunteering, sending money, sending time, their time and resources to the Navajo Nation. So we're all in this together, Shidene. I fully believe that we'll get through this and we'll be the better for it. So I appreciate you all. And just some real quick tidbits before I bring on Dr. Jill Jim, our Executive Director of Navajo Department of Health. It's just that during this holiday day, week, right? Some of you are shopping for food, turkey and whatnot. And hopefully you'll get blessed and get, receive one of these turkeys at our food distribution places. Not later today in St. Leo, we're at Dine College, but tomorrow at Crown Point at Navajo Technical University. But you know, something that you could do is still remain thankful during this time that you're alive, that you are safe and thankful that those that have contracted this virus, that they are safe. And we can pray and be thankful for the lives of those that were with us and succumbed to this virus. And so again, we're all in this together and we have to use our attitudes, use our ability to create positive change and not be negative and not dwelling on the bad things that happen. And so that's the encouragement, our Office of the President Vice President during this time, that we fully put out there praying for you all, working with those that'll help us, reach out to us. Again, President mentioned World Vision, World Central Kitchen Core. We've had Samaritan's Purse here in the past here. And they've donated lots of food and water and wood. They brought eight, or whoa, hopped up by ten or eleven woodcutters out at Rehoboth, passed out, to be passed out to the families. And so this is happening all across the land, all across the nation. So we appreciate it. We are thankful, amen. We are thankful at this time to be able to be in this position to receive that. Because God gives seed to the sower and we help them get blessed by receiving what they wish to give to us. And so we receive, and that's a good thing. Sometimes we don't know if we refuse, we block somebody's blessing. And so when we receive it, somebody else gets blessed. And that's God's economy, that's how God's kingdom works. And we definitely don't want to block somebody's blessing. So all across this land, just know many are praying for you all, Shidene, and fasting and sacrificing. And so it'll continue, it'll continue. And so we appreciate those that are doing that. So real quickly, keep our families safe. No large gatherings, just stay in your nuclear household. Any dinner that you'll pray, that you'll cook and prepare. And you know, just again, you know, open up with a word of prayer, bless the food. And you know, we thank our Creator for protecting us. And just stay home, stay safe, and do, you know, those things that families do here. So without further ado, I want to bring up Dr. Jill Jim here, our Executive Director of our Department of Health. We appreciate her, appreciate all. Again, Dr. Ba was on earlier and Dr. Perphilia Fowler was on interpreting for her. What a neat change-up that was. So unless I switched up here, maybe I just wanted to make sure that Dr. Jill Jim is ready to go. And she is, so appreciate you. Thank you, Dr. Jim. We appreciate all your hard work, sacrifice and the time that you've put into all this. And thank you for your leadership. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Jill Jim.
Thank you, Vice President, for those kind words and our continuing efforts to battle COVID-19. I think we're here much into it. We're still having conversation on ways to reduce the spread of COVID-19. I think we are at the peak of the pandemic and it's not slowing down. So I appreciate President Nez's words, also to support families out there in need regarding anything given, dinner needs that they need or due to just the impact of COVID-19. So always be, I'm always appreciative, I guess, of all the help that anyone can get from donors or anybody going out to helping our community. So thank you, Vice President, for the introduction. I am the Director, Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. And I want to welcome all the listeners this afternoon. So go ahead and transition to the slides here that talk about COVID-19 in general. But in the meantime, I'll keep talking. So here, non, k'ha, da is no th'agi, say, Dr. Jill, den n'tiya do. Look, ah, in so, ch'at ch'ini, b'as is shiin do, is shiin, das it shi do, az'olhna, i'da sanala. Ah, da, is John, san do, it's is ba, he yon de, beg edin shiin do, k'ha, and, you know, nes, oh, you, k'ha, di, is yon de, k'ha, k'ha, si, x'ariz, la, yani, it's, k'ha, b'is, n'dayn, nes. So I just want to thank all the workers out there, the frontline workers, as Thanksgiving is coming up. And I think this is a good time to reflect on the year and also be thankful and also recognize that we are in a pandemic, that the shelter in place order is very important, that we follow those shelter in place orders. Some of the dental recommendations, we emphasize, I think it's always a good reminder to continue to wear your mask and wear it properly. And Dr. Fowler, so my, did a good job explaining wearing your mask correctly around your face. Make sure it covers your nose and mouth completely. And also ensuring that there is social distancing that are occurring, not only in the workplace, but at home and also in the grocery stores. At home meaning like if you do have visitors that are not part of your household and they have to come to your home. Those are some measures we still have to take is to be six feet apart. And then also continue to wash your hands at work, at home. Having a hand sanitizer as a backup and also cleaning and disinfecting high-touch surface areas. So those are some recommendations we always discuss here, either in your work, home, any place that you go to and they do your errands is very important. So in hila, and, ah, t'ha, da, yes, and so, ah, do, um, bi, da, l'ch'at, b'da, da, ch'idi, do, and da, tor. And so just wanted to make that message briefly. And also students that are coming home for Thanksgiving, we will issue an advisory today regarding the recommendations for family members who work off the Navajo Nation and college students coming home for Thanksgiving, that they get tested before they come home or either they at least quarantine themselves to make sure they're not, they don't have any signs or symptoms. But most importantly, individuals coming home for Thanksgiving, they shouldn't be sick. If you are sick, it's probably best not to travel. Also continue to practice all the precautions that you would do when families or individuals that do come home, that's quite risky as we all indicated. So avoid any social activities and unnecessary travels during the Thanksgiving. Also, wear a mask indoors as well and quarantine for 14 days. But if you are sick, I mean, it's probably advisable not to come home and either seek services where you can either safely isolate or quarantine. And we also have those type of facilities here on the Navajo Nation. We're continuing to expand our isolation and quarantine facilities. We have one in Socorro, supporting the Alamo and Tahajd'alee communities. And also the Tinley area covers all the Navajo Nation communities. And we hope that we can assist families that don't have the ability to transport. We can help transport you to these isolation areas as well. And we do have a quarantine in Kianta for those that are awaiting test results and don't want to expose other family members. So those are some places that we have, but we're continuing to work on expanding this. While you're thinking about Thanksgiving, continue to lower your risk. Have your dinner with people that you live with and also delivering meals to family members without contact. That's probably preferable, but also ensuring that people that are preparing meals are not sick too. So if you are sick, please do not provide meals to other family members, especially if you're sick. And we're also hearing and we're from some of our individuals at hospitals that they thought it was just a regular flu or allergy. So any flu-like symptoms, please continue to know that we are, we don't know if it's one of those type of illnesses. So just ensuring that anytime that you're sick, please avoid making meals for others. Also, having dinner with your own family is very important during this time. And I don't know about virtual dinners and sharing recipes, but I think it's a great idea that someone can try, given that we have the, some families have the ability to do, have phones or either Facebook or other means of looking or viewing each other's dinners. So I think that's a great idea, sharing recipes as well with family members. Also shopping online for Black Friday instead of going out there physically. And given the situation, I think there are more stores that are not opening. So we'll see how that goes before. I know that Black Friday was always a big thing, even last year, where they expanded the hours and the whole idea of shopping and online shopping has evolved over the last couple of years. And I think with the pandemic, there is going to be some expected changes. And so just be cognizant of those and think of your safety when you are thinking of putting yourself at higher risk, which means you're actually going into the stores and shopping and also attending large dinners with people you don't live with too. And then beginning to travel off to Navajo Nation as well. And then things that you can do at home is to enjoy your family time by watching football parades or movies at home and also still continuing to reduce your risk. So there are ways that we can reduce our risk for COVID, any kind of COVID-19 prevention. And as we mentioned, like always stay with people in your household only. Those are part of the public health orders as well. And then see if things can be done more by phone and virtual, but do not gather with outside individuals outside your home. And especially in multiple number of individuals increases your risk. And previously, we had talked about ventilation, poor ventilation does, could possibly contribute to increase of COVID-19 if someone is positive in an enclosed area. So just make sure that there is those precautions that you take. And at times, we were continuing to still educate about the lockdown that's in place right now, which is in effect another, about another, a little over a week and a half. And so traveling to the store and doing your errands, one, having one person go and fill up the gas or get groceries is so important. So continue to follow those shelter in place orders. There isn't an exact curfew in place, but the whole lockdown is somewhat of a curfew. And also to consider that we shouldn't be traveling in multiple families to the grocery store or other means. So limit your individuals to going to conduct errands is very important. Also, we are still in a red state or a status for the reopening plan as well. So the grocery stores do have a limit and it is really dependent on the size of the grocery store. Some are thirty to fifty. So if people would just go to the grocery store as one person and then also for essential services to have a shopping list. Also, make sure you don't touch but see your food. There are some shopping tips that we have on the Navajo Department of Health for those, if you are having a difficult time with shopping, so you don't spend as much time in the grocery store, make a shopping list so that you can go in and out of the grocery store and allow others to shop as well. So the variability of the stores are across between thirty to fifty persons in a grocery store. And there are five-person limits in gas station, ten-person or less in laundry facilities and only drive-through services are allowed. Other non-essential items are not operating at this point during the shelter in place. So this is a time to stay home is the purpose of the shelter in place. And then also understanding your exposure level. Sometimes we may not feel like we understand who is a close contact. There are several guidelines from CDC and recently updated, but our previous guideline for close contact for fifteen minutes or more and with someone that had, is possibly positive or is positive and that you're not wearing your mask increases your risk. And it can be your own family members or it can be anyone that you had face-to-face interactions with. And this could be either going to get services somewhere. And right now, we limit the interaction. We don't have dining services. We also don't do any face-to-face interaction with non-essential items such as hair salons or other things. So there should be few interactions. And then if there are government, table government programs that are operating, we hope that those programs are following protocols to ensure that services are being met by limiting face-to-face interactions. And also those that you can be in close contact based on your daily routine could be coworkers. And so in your workplace, please ensure that you continue to social distance and not congregate or share meals. I think Dr. Fowler made a good point even in the last town hall to talk about not sharing meals or not coming together and sharing meals either outside or inside is very cautious at this point due to the number of workplace exposures that we're experiencing right now. So please continue to practice these. And sometimes you may consider your coworkers somewhat like your family members that you think you trust everybody. But at this point, it's really unknown because of diseases, community spread, that we have to consider everyone almost thinking of them as having COVID. So that means always wearing your mask and always social distancing. And if you do accept food or other things or before you eat or drink things at work, continue just to make sure your hands are clean when you do that. So and this really limits us from anyone from touching and hugging or having any physical contact that is like hugging or shaking hands. And those days have come and gone and I hope that we all continue to practice that. But we're some new ways of greeting individuals. And some people just stay at a distance and say, no, no, thank you, and just say hi. And I think that has become the norm. Some people still do the foot kicks or either their fist bumps. But even that, that's still limited. And I think we just have to continue to acknowledge that as well. So and also anyone who had been in a closed room or space, this is, church services are not allowed right now during the shelter in place. Or ceremonies are not advised, especially with large gatherings. So those type of services are allowed minimally. But there shouldn't be any people congregating or having large amounts of gatherings for even those type of activities in the next couple of days. Because the more we gather, the more we put others at risk and the more cases we're going to continue to see. And as Dr. Ba had mentioned earlier, our healthcare system was, may not be able to withstand the number of cases coming in, especially if patients become more critical. So just understand that here on Navajo, we want to ensure that by having everyone abide by the shelter in place can help save lives and reduce the risk of transmission. Also, if you had direct contact with any ill person's droplets as well, as we know that it is airborne to some extent and also transmittable through droplets. So others that are sneezing, coughing, or those are just some symptoms that you can tell that we are not sure at that point if the individual might know if they have COVID or not. So as I mentioned, continue to monitor everyone's signs and symptoms and also understand that when you're awaiting testing, test results too, that you are there as an individual to take some precautions. If you have symptoms of COVID-19, stay home and don't go to work or run errands out in public places. Arrange for others to help you with your errands or prepare as well too. If you think you might have COVID, there should always be an emergency plan. And if possible, stay in a separate room and use a separate bathroom as well. Sometimes if you don't have a separate room and bathroom, you can seek isolation. The quarantine services that we have in Kianta so far, there are some in Gallup and Farmington for New Mexico residents as well. But continue to understand that the reason for these separate rooms and bathrooms is to isolate the, um, quarantine the individuals. So they, if they are positive, that at least you have taken some steps to prevent transmission of COVID among your household. And as we had talked about before, entire households being affected with COVID is not, is not good for individuals in the household. So if you have a suspected person in your household, take all these precautions and make sure you wear face covering when you're around others, even in your household at that time, because you're very unsure. Avoid sharing personal items as well. Some things that you might change in your household is using disposable topperware or either plates or forks, plastic fork or spoons for the person that has, could be suspected. And also you can have paper towels in your bathroom instead of towels or have a separate towel if you're sharing a bathroom. And just taking precautions to wash your clothes in a warm setting and also keeping the surface areas pretty clean, spray them down. And even water and soap can go a long ways. So I think we shouldn't underestimate that soap and water can just be as effective if we don't have bleach or other sign of sort of solution. So know that any sort of cleaning solution, I think, can be helpful as well. Wash hands often with soap and water when you're in the households and also monitor your symptoms. And sometimes you might forget, if you're unsure, you can start writing down your symptoms in a journal on a piece of paper, because you'll be asked questions if you are positive and you meet, a contact tracer will notify you at that point. And you need to have questions about your whereabouts or either your signs and symptoms and how you're feeling as well. So just know that those are very important to monitor your symptoms because it will contribute to when you can be around others when you do recover and when you have COVID-19. So notify people that you've been in contact with, just to let them know that you are starting to feel sick. I think that's just a personal responsibility to let others know that you're beginning to feel symptoms. So backtrack where you're at. And so, and it will be easier, or easy, if you do already do shelter in place and you're not around others. I think that was a safer approach than when you are very mobile and you go across and you're, you meet with friends or you are around others. Your ability to do and notifications to individuals might become more difficult. So it's very important to shelter in place. And if you don't have symptoms, and you can still continue to stay home and don't go to work and until your results come in, and you continue to wear a mask and maintain social distancing. But if you are positive, continue to stay home, drink plenty of fluids and take medication. And also if it worsens, always know that you have the option to continue to seek emergency medical care. And if you are negative, continue to stay alert. If you were exposed to COVID-19 and quarantined for 14 days, regardless of a negative test result. Because of the incubation period for COVID-19, your positive test result might occur days after, between two to five days or even longer at times. So just know that just because you get a negative test doesn't mean that you, if you could develop symptoms days after you are, that you took a test. Also, testing is always continuously necessary. Just because you tested negative like in March, April or May, it doesn't mean that you don't need to get tested again. You always need to ensure that you continually get tested because this is an infectious disease that can occur at any time. So so testing really does matter. Doesn't mean that if you tested negative once, if you felt like you were exposed before and you're second exposure, you're like, well, why could it be negative? No, and those are all very important to still consider to get tested. Like I mentioned before, when you are waiting for your test results, you can continue to think about when you will be safe around others as well. And we always consider that we are protecting our older adults and individuals with underlying health conditions as well. But if you know that you have COVID-19 symptoms and test positive and tested positive, you can be around others 10 days since your symptoms first appeared, at least 24 hours since last fever, without taking medications like Tylenol or Ibuprofen or other fever-reducing medication and that your symptoms haven't improved. So there is an important timeline to consider when you think you are wanting to be around others and you've recovered well. And at times, individuals do not have any symptoms. So if you do not have symptoms, you're considered in the category of being asymptomatic. And when you are asymptomatic, wait 10 days have, 10 days have passed since your test and also continue to have no symptoms. So those are very important guidelines regarding when to be around others. So if you think you want to be around others one day or two days after your symptoms or your testing, that's not advisable. And so please continue to stay alert with all the things that we're recommending here. And then if you do test positive or you need to go to the hospital and if you think you could be infected with COVID and you need to go to an isolation site, please prepare for your hospital visit. Notify your emergency contact if your plans, because you might have pets or other animals at home that need to be taken care of. So always arrange care for those other animals or other pets at home. And also secure your household or personal belongings too. You might have to lock up extra valuables in your home or give access to the key for someone to take care of your pets or other things need to be taken. So just be on alert on being prepared. And some things to bring with you because you not, you may not know how long you will be there. You might be referred to an isolation, the isolation in Tinley. And there, they might ask, make sure that you have your photo ID or any medications they need to be aware of, your insurance or any health directives. Your public health record can be discussed when you get to the facility. List of family, friends and family, any extra clothing that you might bring and also toiletries and hygiene products and also phone chargers, books or other things that you might want to keep occupied. You might have some magazines or you might have some crossword puzzles or things to kind of keep you entertained if you are expecting to be there longer than usual. So continue to make efforts to prepare for a longer stay if you do test positive and are recommended to stay in the hospital. Other areas that I had talked about is the workplace safety as well. Stay home when you are sick, also avoid sharing equipment and as well in the workplace. Continue to have good practices in cleaning your facilities. I know in our facility, we try to have bleach and water out, or we do. And people have access to that to wipe down their desk area and then the equipment in the morning and the evening and other times when people use those equipment. And like I mentioned, please stay home when you are sick because we don't know if it's COVID, flu or other illnesses that can get others sick. And that's what we're trying to do is prevent transmission of COVID-19 in areas where we know we have to be every day. And so that requires wearing your mask, washing your hands. And also, also consider how you deal with visitors at your workplace. You might have a room for them or you might rather meet with them by phone or virtually instead. So there are ways to accommodate, ways to meet with your customers or clients. But the first thing is everyone's safety to avoid at this point any transmission of COVID-19. We have to be cautious. So changing practices at work is always very important. We also have a COVID-19 report exposure webpage as well. um we also have a covid nineteen report exposure webpage as well where you can report a workplace exposures um and this is very important because we are monitoring the number of workplace exposures from high-risk settings that includes our own tribal programs um food establishments schools, long-term care facilities um nursing homes and other things are just uh places that are very um might have some very under individuals with underlying health conditions or not or every place of business is important because the public comes into the facility to use your services and we want to ensure the safety of all individuals when customers are coming into the businesses so there is a red um button there on the covid nineteen webpage for Department of Health um that you just click on and then you give minimal information and then a case manager will get back with you um and sometimes um these cases are already being investigated but we're requiring um documentation of all these exposures I think due to the vastness of the Navajo Nation we always try to make sure we are aware of all the exposures to I'm sure everyone is following on safety protocols also our Navajo Nation three-week lockdown still is in effect till December sixth and part of that public health order is to stay home stay on the Navajo Nation avoid gatherings outside your normal household also leave for emergencies only um such as food groceries obtaining medicine or health services gathering wood for with appropriate permits and others and then gas station grocery stores restaurants laundry mats hay vendors are still allowed between seven and three P M on weekdays and weekends and then as I mentioned before it's uh very important to consider that the safest place is at home to stop the spread as you reduce your interaction with other individuals in in the public or at work and that's why we have a shelter in place we um reduced our workforce um with the tribal government as a way to help reduce the transmission of covid but there are employees that are still working so just want to be thankful for all the people that are continuing to continue to operate the services to our constituents and Navajo citizens in this time even though um the numbers are high we still want to emphasize on everyone's safety especially during the holidays so um thank you very much for listening everybody I hope that you learned something new today um from this presentation that you can share with others so um share with your grandma your your auntie or your nephews your nieces your cousins your relatives on some of these safety messages and also you can help translate in Navajo as well so um thank you very much and um have a good day
Yonanet e shikaido shidne she kudo profiliya fala des jenido maide skis ni shido tori chini basis chin aschay des nando topa e des shi ah nido e kudo hashinsa go aben soit a e itcha wesh ne akko kudo ea olha benan e do di kudzu department of personnel management ah hashinsa go nachan dal neshi ita itnili aje ea di rineza di na di rineza di ndemilia do a di neza di na ades di na ashla akonela ea nachan deilni sh aro na akonela ea um di hazard duty pay deilne ea nido ah be belana aslido behna da e jneshdik ad nam neshi onz aje ne akonana liya dcha d'moje ea hashinsa go di hitzalado tsiznij jahnli ni aje ah ba bala ba ba nanal ya behesani akko ea dik ad be daenish do le amna de zedonilchit sohbi ye ona hastha yo lchal aje shi be neholjish do le akon de di hashinsa de kusnalni higi ah ah nanat sa go ay de go nanal kihwashay na stinadit ajo ea koe um di tila di na tani nlini shiyado tylunlini ea lahba nanasla aro ahonwa de nahasod chan hitneshi kaido shidne akko de kui ri shi ben hirln dahuilne akko di aro kudzu viral records aje ea hashinsa go di la um ah koe ahaz anitaga hotzandhi gi ea lahba do na do di nda anisone onz aje ne waliya ah ah ea ea nle ah oje go ea aje teea ati la daenish ea viral record central agency do shipla do crown point aje ah akko aje shi laan hitka do lalashi ini bechbehne oda di do 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 la ne di tchindu ea aje benina hotani ea hota istan ea hilbe hotzen aro di shelter in place nichitnini aho wa de so ta jo nachaya at eh aro hashinsa behesani bikahna lani ihehe nichidi nido le aro di nichilohot eh eh do ba aheh ni tsundan de jo di de kus a na stetsa da bebe be odje nalnihi ayeh go naatjoh shikaido shidne ea benina be etah weliado be ilkesu do i be ah lato be hyejo be na no tchen aho wa desun daholiya aro hashinolha ea nashinolne nan is central hitno ea ho wa desota aro on hillan da itjehe di ezel nido ezel ni ka aje ezel injudeilni shi je ea tcha go olke nahas aea iyesi a de di de kusnalnihi ati nalni dan hirlne akko e laje iyesi ea di nan neshi de a de oyu yahanasne ta ne akko ea shi ani hi do be etah ahwiliango bechneyta shi ilto kote hago shi ilna neta bechnaneta do do bahwili ne ta bechneyta aro la aliu behtati behtatilna jo ohut a a hisne workplace jo ajo virus ki elaha oyosen jo ea di nda alkahi a de ihi yijja aro na keo ne ea house to house deilne di hotcha jrago hotcha konjrago aro la ba anji lago ahwa de dohna ha otte aje de hashinsa go ye go nalni shikaido shidne aro tcha ne ea di traveling deilne hago shi chana atago le kitcha go da aro di um etchoi ndaha kahodha ishi do datoli a de ha ishi bejdelni go kui dohcha ha otte aro naatjoh de shnahan ne eta yajraga hota atano ne yajraga hota cha ah kota chinyan ne yajraga di chamasi la to yen dakhida aro tlota taha tlota chasen go hashi enta jetlo beje do ta tyltaso a akon ne ta asan ta hutaticholo ea nle ta naatjoh ea bena ben chilhona airborne deilne akko ea naatjohi um hani ona xazena ta eicholo aro tskojyihon da bahnacha aho kudetol na ha otte ea na yee bahatsa aro onda khe dan hitne aro hashinsa go di la um nichita tohna i jo ea hashinsa go ltsa nahatilkha aro nahatilkha go at ea nan tskha once you test aro ea ho wan shto taha a de needs at da fourteen days ho wa de tsusda ro lel benina osun da ro kudetni ni gi ea nato na on do ea khe da ba na de itlne ta jo ea na ltsa ho wa de suntan tne nan tskha ta akko ton dohna on nle tcha tcha itjen nahona ton dohna tan ton niden de istan aro ea di tsata chimp na neji a hashinsa go di na alkahi iltsa ton dohna ta kudetni aro hashi bechnetlonam neshon shdo ta nan neshi nesna chen nadischnis do kudo kudze na do na ayeh i sin nendo na kudeton ni ea benina iltsa ho wa de suntan tne ea 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 si ben hitche hotesh ben hitche hotesh ne son kudo behanas si belagana ik edje ea esamtemer deilne aye ta be nan na hyeji ntsitsi dones geda nde do delkostan de ha ishi neshje o be nan na lajjo aye ta behta itlna ea benina iltsa ho wa gesun tan tne ea biketahonol shikaido shidne aro di nas go ne nje sheinjono ya teho kesmish yasada itlel ea ni tsun akon de a bi ghahoho ba behtan hiranit ea behtatol ati kahi biye nanah khe go shi da a de ya tehoto lel ea a de nda elhi elhi nde di kha akon de jo di Thanksgiving wali ni ishi ba aheh sunsen jo hatzisi gi bahasthi nachanhan ni tsuni benina koda a kui je ban tan hi ni kan shikaido shidne aro kudo otta alini nichido ahehe aro kudo ah bechbehne do bihati tsik da da dohni ni nichido at anci kes akko aji beni tsoida ohon da di khaa a de ah bikendon lo aro do be yuisthuisani aje te da ista anani la be internet da ataten aido la ton hilbe hotzen akko aro di ilkaha wali ni gi tro ilkaha hyejo che doh aro otte enda i hin hashinsa go la um do do hyejo chi ina aro aro da tlane aido do nachaya at eh da tro hashinsa go la aro di ha um ndaha gahigi do hyinda iltahi do ah o eyu go honeni aido ltsan inosen shikaido shidne aro di eh do do odjeni da cha ninteh jo ba ashte deni do yego ba ashte deni te da do do ba yaatki da do odjeni da cha nini gi jo emergency plan deilne kudo shi chaeyen hanatsi nle nahoncho da alna i a de eh do hashinsa go che des kheh o eyu go shi itsis nlini aro nahoncho de la da akon de aje nan neshigi hyejo ba alke sohnel ea di life insurance da dohli ni na tsos hyejo ba ashte daale aro benina sa do benina sa ho jellnoda benina do ha kee benas di jada galaa anido ba ashte deni te da a anii oyu kudo de kus nlini bela ashla in hitsa ne hisla do biketahastri ea eh do ba aheh ni tsundan kudo hyejo sa be da ahonini bechche yachki eyo da ahi nohne hyejo ea um nachalshen nlini ba ahwaliya aro hashinsa go shuisani ama aje ho wa de nazda ni ilto ba atahwia shikaido shidne do do eh hota um nichilhui do ah da da ni tsunohata biitcha di kha akon de becha daenof nido beley di kha otte shikaido shidne